Okay, before we get started, Agenda Item Number 10, Resolution 2025-177 regarding the Tree Canopy Replacement Grant Application for Baywood Village 2 has been postponed to the December 11, 2025 Commission meeting and will not be heard on tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Tonight's musical selection made by our wonderful City Manager Sheila Rose was "Put A Little Love In Your Heart," performed by Annie Lennox and Al Green. At the next Commission meeting on December 11, 2025, the music selection will be made by Mayor Riley. As we begin, we kindly ask that all mobile devices be silenced. To ensure the best possible sound quality, please speak clearly and directly into the microphone. And remember to mute your microphone when you are not speaking. Should anyone experience difficulty hearing at any time, please raise your hand and a hearing device will be provided to you. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Rydell.
Here.
Commissioner Welch.
Here.
Commissioner Brody.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Here.
Mayor Riley.
Here.
City Manager Rose.
Here.
City Attorney Pyburn.
Here.
Okay. Would all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being conducted live with a physical quorum present. The material for today's meeting is available online at coconutcreek.gov. Anyone wishing to appeal any decision made will need a record of the proceedings, and for such purpose may need to ensure that a verbatim recording of the proceedings is made, including the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based. The archive of this meeting may be requested from the City Clerk or may be heard online at coconutcreek.gov. If you haven't already, please silence your mobile devices. If you must take a phone call, please excuse yourself and step outside. Respect and proper decorum will be maintained throughout the meeting. Vocal outbursts, cheering, cheering, or applause can impair the rights of others and derail the decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you. We have the privilege of having a swearing-in ceremony for our new police officers, Dominic Di Pietro and Adam Morton, Deputy Chief of Police. Henry Cabrera will conduct the presentation, and City Clerk Kavanaugh will administer the oath of office.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney, City Clerk, family, friends, and guests. This evening, it is my pleasure to present the two newest police officers to our agency. Let's learn a little bit about each one. At this time, I'd like to call up Officer Dominic Di Pietro to the stage.
Looks like a baby.
Officer Di Pietro was born and raised in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. He attended Calvary Christian Academy from third grade through his graduation in 2022. Growing up, Dominic was involved in a variety of sports and hobbies, including auto racing, ice hockey, and motor racing. These pursuits helped him build lasting relationships and develop a strong sense of discipline and teamwork. Great lessons for his chosen career path. To pursue his childhood dream of becoming a police officer, Dominic began his public safety career as a community service aide for the city of Sunrise at the age of 19, where he gained valuable experience serving the community. Shortly after, he was given the opportunity to start his new law enforcement career with BSO, serving in Pompano Beach after graduating from Broward College Police Academy. While there, he gained more valuable experience than any new officer could ask for. Dominic is following in the footsteps of his father, Walter Di Pietro, a former Coconut Creek Police Officer. Yes, Dominic is a legacy.
Wow.
Officer Di Pietro is now proud to serve the same community as his father. Every day, Dominic strives not only to honor his father's legacy, but to build his own through hard work, professionalism, and an unwavering commitment to public safety. Officer Di Pietro is beyond excited to continue his career in law enforcement with the Coconut Creek Police Department and serve the residents of our city. Here to support Officer Di Pietro are his father, mother, and brother. At this time, I'd like to call up our second newest police officer to the stage, Officer Adam Morton. Officer Morton originally grew up in Massachusetts, hailing from a family of seven, where he was the second youngest sibling. He attended the Massachusetts Maritime Academy and graduated with a bachelor's degree in emergency management. In July of 2020, Adam moved to New Hampshire with the goal of becoming a police officer. He was officially sworn in into the San Boron Police Department in New Hampshire after graduating from the New Hampshire Police Academy in April 2021. Officer Morton served with the San Boron PD for five years as a patrol officer and was also tasked with being a field training officer. He officially applied to the Coconut Creek Police Department in May and was hired on October 6. Officer Morton is honored to continue his law enforcement career here with the Coconut Creek Police Department. He is looking forward to serving the community and working with his new fellow officers. In Adam's free time, he enjoys fishing, both salt and freshwater, coaching high school wrestling, and spending time with his family. Here to support Officer Morton are his parents. The City Clerk will now administer the oath of office.
I just solemnly swear that I will protect and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and the State of Florida and the ordinances and ordinances of the City of Coconut Creek, and that I truly qualify to hold office under the Constitution of the State of Florida, and that I will, I will well think of the duties of a police officer for the City of Coconut Creek, of which I now have.
Would the Commissioners like to come on down and take a picture? We'll do family after. You want to do it together or separate? We'll do a separate.
Separate.
Yeah, separate. I'm going to call them out as well. Thank you. And family members? All right, we'll do family first this time. So stay up there, Mom. Mom, stay up. Mom, Mom. Stay up there. Dad, come on up. Take a picture. Excellent. Commissioners, come on down. All right. Sure.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing November 29, 2025, as Small Business Saturday. Commissioner Rydell will read the proclamation and present it to Valencia Massey, Business Process Analyst, Sustainable Development Commissioner Rydell.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas advocacy groups, as well as the public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, and whereas 2025 marks the 16th Annual Small Business Saturday, and whereas Small Business Saturday is essential to the preservation of the neighborhoods that comprise the landscape of our local economy and enrich the unique culture, and whereas the city of Coconut Creek proudly celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, small businesses create 66% of net new jobs and account for 40% of the nation's economic output, whereas 68 cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the United States stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at a small business creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. Whereas in 2024 alone, shoppers spent $17 billion on Small Business Saturday, reinvesting in local economies, and whereas the city of Coconut Creek, Florida supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our community. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Commission of the city of Coconut Creek, Florida proclaims November 29, 2025, as Small Business Saturday, and we urge our residents throughout our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants who are the fabric of our economies, not just on Small Business Saturday, but throughout the year. It's signed by the mayor, the vice mayor, the commission, and attested to by the City Clerk. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Valencia.
Thank you, members of commission and city leadership. Small Business Saturday is a national tradition, but here in Coconut Creek, it means something more. Our small businesses are where we gather, where we find our familiar faces, and where we force, and they are a force to keep the community thriving. As we continue to improve our current programs, we are striving to find new and creative initiatives to support small businesses in the community. Post 2019, the City Commission and City Staff created and implemented the Butterfly Relief Grant to provide relief to our small businesses. In support of our restaurant, City Commission and City Staff launched Creek Eats and Creek Cuisine, a culinary celebration of Coconut Creek's local flair. The Small Business Academy was a resource where local entrepreneurs learn practical skills about marketing, social media, doing business with government, and creating partnerships. And speaking of partnerships, we have longstanding relationships with the Greater Fort Lauderdale Alliance, Junior Achievement, Broward County Office of Economic and Small Business Development, Career Source, and our very own Coral Springs Coconut Creek Chamber. We have a permanent concierge team coordinated by yours truly to enhance communication, improve efficiency, and provide a higher level of service for applicants navigating the city's development review process, permitting, and business tax receipts. These programs and initiatives exemplify our Vision 2030 values of service excellence, innovation, and continuous improvement. So, as we head into this holiday season, I encourage everyone to be mindful of where you spend your dollars. Choose local coffee shops, neighborhood salons, and family-owned restaurants. On Business Saturday, make the choice to shop local and let that commitment extend well beyond Saturday. Keep your cash in the creek.
We will now have input from the public on non-agenda or consent agenda items. I remind everyone wishing to speak that all comments must pertain to city business. Respect and proper decorum will be maintained. Behavior that disrupts the orderly conduct of this meeting, such as clapping, shouting, booing, and cheering is not permitted. Any person who violates the decorum rules will be subject to removal from the commission chambers. City Clerk Kavanaugh, is there anyone who has signed up to speak on non-agenda or consent agenda items?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak? Thank you. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda items three through nine. Three, a motion approving the minutes from previous City Commission meeting, 2025-1009R. Number four, Resolution 2025-180, a resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to execute the attached law enforcement mutual aid agreement for K-9 detection enforcement activities with participating Broward County law enforcement agencies. Number five, Resolution 2025-181, a resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to renew the attached mutual aid agreement for the continued voluntary cooperation between the Florida Department of Law Enforcement and participating agencies of the Miami Regional Operations Center Child Abduction Response Team, also known as CHART. Number six, Resolution 2025-166, a resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to execute Amendment Number 11 to the Florida Department of Transportation District Four Landscape Inclusive Maintenance Memorandum of Agreement to provide for maintenance of sidewalks, landscaping, and other related improvements within the Atlantic Boulevard, State Road 814, right-of-way in connection with the Gray Star Kokomar Development Project located at the northwest corner of Atlantic Boulevard and Lyons Road. Number seven, Resolution 2025-169, a resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to execute the attached maintenance agreement between the city of Coconut Creek and Kokomar Property Owner LLC, which agreement transfers and assigns responsibilities for the maintenance of sidewalks, landscaping, and other improvements in the West Atlantic Boulevard, State Road 814, right-of-way adjacent to the property located at West Atlantic Boulevard at the northwest corner of Lyons Road, known as the Gray Star Kokomar Development Project. Number eight, Resolution 2025-162, a resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to execute Amendment Number 12 to the Florida Department of Transportation District Four Inclusive Landscape Maintenance Memorandum of Agreement for the purpose of maintaining sidewalks, landscaping, and other improvements within the right-of-way of West Hillsborough Boulevard, State Road 810, associated with the Hillsborough Marketplace Development Project. Nine, Resolution 2025-163, a resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to execute the attached maintenance agreement between the city of Coconut Creek and Hillsborough Marketplace Investments LLC, which agreement transfers and assigns responsibilities for the maintenance of the sidewalks, landscaping, and other improvements in the West Hillsborough Boulevard, State Road 810, right-of-way adjacent to the property located at West Hillsborough Boulevard at the northwest corner of Lyons Road to Hillsborough Marketplace Investments LLC. Are there any items the commission wishes to pull?
Move consent.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a move, a motion from Commissioner Rydell, a second from Commissioner Welch. Thank you to approve the agendas. Mr. Kavanaugh, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Rydell.
Yes.
Commissioner Welch.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Yes. Thank you. Resolution 2025-178, a resolution approving the landings at Victoria Isle Homeowners Association application for grant funds from the Neighborhood Enhancement Program for a multipurpose landscape design project to redesign the landscape master plan. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move it.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions from commission? Or statements? Yes, Commissioner Welsh?
No, I was just... Yeah, mine.
No, I understand. Victoria Isle, is that located in Windmore?
No.
No, that's somewhere else. I want to make that, I want to make that clear, though, just for the record, that it's not some, because we do have a Victoria association in Windmore, and I would recuse myself, but just wanted to make sure.
No, it's located north of the Sawgrass Expressway as part of...
Yes, for the record, I wanted, I wanted that noted. Yes, Commissioner Rydell.
I just wanted to say that the Victoria Isles community actually has their association meeting this evening. They wanted to be here. I spoke to the president of the association as well. Dan, I want to thank you. I know you've taken a lot of time on this one. They, he's very active in the city as well. They wanted to be here again, but they had their own conflicting meeting, and I guess, Dan, thank you. You made an opportunity saying, hey, we could reset this, but they want to move forward. I want to let everybody know they fully intended to be here, but they had a different commitment. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion or presentation by staff?
Oh, ma'am.
Wonderful. Mr. Kavanaugh, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Rydell.
Yes.
Commissioner Welch.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Yes. Number 12, Resolution 2025-158, a resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to execute the Fifth Amendment to the inter-local agreement with Broward County for community shuttle services. This has been tabled, this was tabled on 10/23/25 at commission meeting. Is there a motion and a second?
Move it.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Rydell, seconded by Vice Mayor Wasserman. Yes, we will see. Have a presentation by Harry Mapp.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. As requested, we reach out to Broward County to request if they would accept a one-year ILA instead of the two. However, they declined. All of the cities that they are, have ILAs with are going at the two years, so they did decline. And if there's any other questions, I'll take...
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions from commission? Thank you. Mr. Kavanaugh, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Rydell.
Yes.
Commissioner Welch.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Yes. Moving right along. Thirteen, a motion authorizing the city manager or designee to approve Kilowatt Electric Company to purchase and install new Florida Department of Transportation approved LED streetlight luminaries along Lyons Road from the Sawgrass Expressway northward to the city limits. Is there a motion and a second?
Move it.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Welsh, seconded by Commissioner Brody. Yes, again?
Good evening again. The city maintains the streetlights along Lyons Road between the Sawgrass Expressway and the northern city limit. This project will replace 43 existing high-pressure sodium light fixtures with the FDOT-approved LED fixtures, and they will provide, these newer fixtures will provide better lighting to reach across the road, all six lanes. We're also installing shields to the backside, so to reduce any, anything, any impacts to the residential properties. During the photometric study, it was also noted that we were missing, that two light, one light pole was missing, and there was another section that needed another light for coverage, so two additional poles will be added, and two of the services that have just degraded over time needed to be upgraded, so that is also included in this. It's expected to last 90 days once the notice to proceed is given. And Kilowatt was going to be here, Representative is going to be here tonight. Oh, there, there she is. Yep, she's here for any questions. Ms. Flack from Kilowatt.
Wonderful, thank you. And not to be confused with the pedestrian lighting that we're also considering.
Correct.
Okay, in the city. Thank you. Any further questions from, or comments? Yes, Commissioner Rydell?
Harry, I just want to ask in terms of when we're doing the work.
When, um, once the notice proceeded, probably take a few weeks, get the PO, the order of the lights. I don't recall the lead time on those.
The lead time on the lights is about four to five weeks. Poles are more like eight weeks.
Four to, four to five weeks for the streetlights.
So maybe, maybe, maybe I misspoke. Let me, let me be a little more clear with my question. Right, when we, when the product's received, what's the time of construct, what's the time for installation, and what's the anticipated time during the day we're doing the installation?
The installation will take place during the day.
I, I know that.
Yeah, we don't have an exact time.
You're going to see where I'm going in about a second.
Yeah, rush hour is what you're...
Not rush hour. It's actually before rush hour. So when, it was ever since we've changed, and this is important for the vendor to know, ever since we've changed the traffic flow at Lyons Creek Elementary, from about 3:45 at Lyons Creek Elementary, from about 3:45 to 5:00 northbound on Lyons Road, is, would be very adversely affected. It's cautionary. Obviously, construction is construction. Obviously, we're not going to get in the way of that project. When I looked at the lead time for the backup that I was given, we're not doing this until the new year anyway, so it doesn't look like, based on the lead times for the respective items, we're going to see that. I just would be remiss if I didn't say out loud to the contractor and the vendor that there's a disastrous time on that road, and understanding, you know, starting maybe earlier, working earlier, I'm not going to tell you when to do the scope of work, but it's just a consideration is the backup that's associated with Lyons Creek on, on a couple different subsects of that swath. I drive it every day, so that's all. It's just cautionary. I do support the item, and I thank you in the bidding process. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. Yes, during the pre-construction conference, we do point out those restrictions, so the contractor can accommodate them, because it doesn't do them any good to have their crews tied up either, to make it as efficient as possible.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Welsh, please.
Yes, hi, thank, thank you, Harry. And this actually is the work prior to this being voted on tonight. It was the installs south of Sawgrass on Lyons. Are all of those completed as replaced?
No, they're not. Approximately 60% are still high-pressure sodiums. They are owned in a combination of FDOT, or, excuse me, FPNL is replacing those lights as, anytime they have to go out and touch that particular fixture, if it's high-pressure sodium, they just replace it with the LED, and also some are county and some are FDOT. So, no, it's just county and FPNL lights, so they're not owned by the city.
That's too bad.
Yes.
Because if we were doing it, it would have already been done by now, right?
Yes.
Because it's such a deviation in, in the light, before you get to the Sawgrass, but thank you very much. We'll, we'll appreciate it going northbound. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Mr. Kavanaugh, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Rydell.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Welch.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Yes.
Number 14, ordinance number 2025-51, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Coconut Creek, Florida, authorizing the mayor to execute the Fourth Amendment to the lease agreement by and between the City of Coconut Creek and T-Mobile South LLC, which provides for the continued leasing of city land for a communications tower and a modification to the equipment on the tower, expansion of the ground lease, and replacement of equipment on the ground, providing for recordation, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. This item is before you at this time for second reading and public hearing.
Move it. Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Welsh, seconded by Commissioner Rydell.
Mayor, I'll recuse myself from 14 and 15. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Wasserman. We're keeping you busy tonight.
There's, yes, my night tonight. There's no additional presentation, this is second reading, but I am here to take any questions. Also, Elizabeth from Cityscape is present as well.
Okay, great. Anybody have any questions? Anyone? Thank you. Well, because you're notorious for questions. Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Kavanaugh, please call the roll.
Commissioner Rydell.
Yes.
Commissioner Welch.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
He's recused.
Recused himself from the vote. Thank you. Mayor Riley.
Yes.
Number 15, ordinance number 2025-55, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Coconut Creek, Florida, authorizing the mayor to execute the Fifth Amendment to the lease agreement by and between the City of Coconut Creek and T-Mobile South LLC, which provides for the continued leasing of city land for a communications tower at Winston Park and a modification of the equipment on the tower, providing for recordation, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. This item is before you at this time for first reading.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Rydell, seconded by Commissioner Brody. Any further discussions necessary?
Can I just clarify?
Mr. Eric?
Sorry, can I just clarify for the record that Vice Mayor Wasserman has recused himself due to his employment with T-Mobile? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Isn't he supposed to leave during a recusal? Isn't that the rule per Roberts rules, that he leaves the dais?
That certainly would be best practice. As you know, we have not necessarily, we, we don't follow strict Roberts rules.
Get out of here. I just know whenever I've recused myself, I've left. I know Jackie has laughed traditionally, I'm just curious.
No, she hasn't laughed, she's turned her chair around.
Okay, I was just asking. Inquiring upon Roberts rules of procedure. Thank you, Madam City Attorney.
Mr. Mout, would you like to make a presentation?
Good evening. The City of T-Mobile desired amended the agreement a fifth time. T-Mobile is planning to change their equipment on the tower and on the ground, which will increase the loading factor approximately 4%. And the amendment also clarifies some of the not exclusive easement areas and other terms under the lease.
Thank you. Any questions? Any further questions? Commissioner Brody.
Once again, I want to be on the record for saying that this tower looks like crap, and it needs to be fixed. It's a disservice to my residents, my area, so that's on record. And normally, when I was in the wireless industry, last guy touching it made sure that it looked up to a standard. I don't know where that ball dropped, but usually whoever touches it makes sure it looks the same way as it went in. That hasn't happened. So, it's on the record that I do not like the look of this tower, it needs to be fixed.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Thank you. Mr. Kavanaugh, please call the roll.
Commissioner Rydell.
Yes.
Commissioner Welch.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman has recused himself. Mayor Riley.
Yes. Thank you. Number 16, resolution 2025-164, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city manager or their designees to execute a revocable license agreement with Broward County authorizing the city to install, operate, and maintain school's zone speed detection systems on Coconut Creek Parkway and Wiles Road. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move it.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Welsh, seconded by Vice Mayor Wasserman. I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner Brody. Okay, yes, Chief Shelton, Captain Shelton.
Thank you. Good evening to all. I just want to say, this is, this is one of two RLOs you'll see. There will be a second one coming out for all of Lyons Road at Johnson and Lyons, and also Winston Park at Lyons. So expect the same resolution to come up another time, that we'll have to approve as well, and then we should be complete with the county's agreement with us and the county with installing these poles.
Thank you. Any questions? Any further questions from commission? Commissioner Brody?
Can I get a clarification? When we, when we start building these, it's going to be as the permits come out, they get installed, correct?
That is correct, and the soonest thing we have was starting December 1st, they should start construction, because there are some permits that have been approved on our city streets. This revocable license agreement is for the county right-of-ways that we're working on, so our city streets should have or see this, the poles go up first before the county does, because by the time we get this signed by the county, we'll already have our poles on our city streets installed. It shouldn't take them long to do. And I actually have the red speed engineer, director of engineering here, if you will have any specific questions.
Not too much. Most of the time, I'm, I'm going to be talking about is timing.
Yep.
Obviously, this is going to be installed after Christmas.
That is correct.
All right. So, we want to make sure that we start putting some notifications out here pretty soon, probably throughout the Christmas, maybe, to make sure that the residents are aware that this is going to be happening?
We will.
Yes.
We'll, we'll have a, I apologize, Sheila.
No, and we just clarified that they will be, we expect that they will be installed before Christmas.
Okay, but not activated until after Christmas, correct?
They'll be on a warning system.
At Christmas?
Well, by the time they start putting them in, and we start getting them up and running, it might be just after Christmas, but we do have a 60-day warning phase that will go out, and we have public service announcements that we've been putting out since the beginning of the year, because we thought it was going to be in much sooner, but we forged some new grounds in this process of installing this, but we are going to have also 60-day warning phase as well to educate the public of where these poles are at.
All right. Can I make a recommendation, that we don't start that 60-day period till after the new year?
We could.
So that, you know, people are not getting upset during Christmas?
We could start it after school comes back in session in the, in the month of January, when school's back from Christmas break.
I think that would be a little bit softer, you know, to the communities, not getting a warning ticket at Christmas.
Understood. That's easy.
... schools aren't going to be on. The school's not going to be on.
Correct, but, well, it depends on when we're talking about Christmas. If they get installed before Christmas break, they're going to be on.
No.
And then after...
They're only on during the hours of the time, but only when the school zone's activated. So if schools aren't on, then the school zone wouldn't be activated.
Right, I understand that.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that they won't get them on at, like, the third, yeah, a couple of days.
He's saying just wait to after Christmas break, even though if we have a week before Christmas, you know, not put it on prior to, but we'll do it after Christmas ends and start in the beginning of the year. That's not a problem.
Right, it would start the first day of school, like, January 4th, 5th, whatever the day is.
Correct, and we'll do the 60 warning phase in the month of January, moving forward. And the public will be greatly informed. We're going to make sure everybody knows, especially the schools and the parents, because we sent the flyers out to every school.
Commissioner Welsh?
Yes, thank you very much, I appreciate it. And can you speak into the microphone a little bit more?
Sure.
Captain Shelton?
Absolutely.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just want to, I just want you to clarify, if you would, timelines that we're talking about, according to the county RLA that was approved today, and when that will begin, and when the warning phases will start.
Well, with the RLA, it would be hard to give you a timeline, because it, this has to now go back to the director of Broward County Engineering, and what they'll do, the traffic engineering unit will send it to their attorney, who will then send it to the commission, because right now, tonight, the commission is signing, and they have signing of an RLA right now that Plantation has, but they're also voting on getting these things signed without having public...
So the good news is, is that happened today.
Yes.
So they'd now be signed administratively.
Perfect, so that means that we don't have to wait for a public meeting for them to sign it, so...
That was where I was going with this, knowing what the vote was today, so that we don't have to go through that exercise and delay subsequent to this approval today.
Correct, now, once that's signed, that still has to be then brought back to the city for permits to be approved for those locations, so it depends on how fast we get those permits issued, will determine a timeline on when they can be installed. So I can't, I don't have an answer. But, you know, when, if that was to get back to us on their LA, when we would be able to get permits out? I'll let her come and talk, because she's, has intricate knowledge about when these permits may be able to go out for those particular locations for county right-of-ways.
Hello, good night.
Hi.
My name is Eileen Cabrera, I'm from the Engineering Division. We've already been reviewing a lot of the preliminary plans, so for the most part, the plans are ready to be approved. They do need to go back to Broward County just to get the signage approved, and then after that, we'll be able to issue the permit.
But you go back to the county, but not for commission approval?
No, it's just for Broward County traffic, for the signage.
And I do very much agree with Commissioner Brody, but the, the education piece should really be divvied down during the month of December, so that when the students come back into session on the 1st of January, everyone that travels those streets that, where it is already activated or installed, that they will be fully aware that it's now on a timeline, a 60-day timeline.
Understood.
So, thank you.
And we also have a public service...
Thank you very much, and thank you, Eileen, for you and your department's good follow-up with the county.
And we also have a public service announcement on YouTube as well, that will go out, so we can hit all, all the audience, the entire, in the community and outside the community.
And it is our option when we want to start them, so...
Yep.
Once that education period and that warning period is over, we can continue. Okay, Commissioner Rydell?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Commissioner Brody. If you're timing this out appropriately, the rollout and the education component, we missed the boat on what we did, and it's primacy and recency, so I don't think people are even thinking about it, but for a weird tap into article that happened, there's been nothing. So we've been radio silent ghosting this from when we had a really good rollout, robust rollout at the beginning of the school year, which didn't happen, so cause for concern on that. Brody's, Commissioner Brody's totally right. If you're going to time this, it actually times out that in the first 60 days, when school's in session, it puts you about two weeks before spring break. You, you got to do it right on the rollout. I think it's actually probably a little more appropriate that it's going to hit the last two months of school. It gives it a good litmus test, right? But in regarding this, I, I direct it to our city manager, that I think this is an update item. I know we only have one more meeting, right? But I think this is an update item for that meeting, and I think that there needs to be a discussion on this dais prior to going live, so each one of us in our own capacity have the ability to reach out to our own constituencies about that. Right? I think it's very important due to the targeting of it. So I'm all on board with it, I just think it needs to be an open, transparent process. I think the PD can actively and successfully look for the best form of the rollout, right? Whether it's 60 days warning, or it's 66 days, I'm sure the vendor will work with us in whatever capacity, so it's successful. So, I just think we need to do that, and I think if we're targeting the beginning of the year, those PSAs that were very, very well done, that, that needs to be back in the news cycle. We need to start pushing that again. We need to start pushing it in Cokogram, we need to start pushing it again that this is happening. So, I agree with my colleagues' comments, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
And I agree, and we, we do control it, so it's what we decide, as, as the city decides, is when we decide to activate it.
I just wanted to ask, the PSA that the chief did at the movie theater?
Yes.
Is it possible to do one of those during the December month regarding this?
I don't have an answer for you, because that's a private entity, we'd have to ask Silver Spot.
Yeah, I asked the chief why we, he's, we're not doing that there anymore, but, I mean, this is a good, this would be a good segue, not only for our residents, but for those in our surrounding areas that might come to the theater and say, okay, heads up, if you're coming through.
We could ask them, but it's at their discretion whether they want to...
Okay, just a thought.
Put it out, but, yeah, we can try that, we will ask.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Wasserman?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think, I think everybody was pretty on point with what they were saying. We should be engaging the principals on this, maybe, you know, I know we don't like, you know, mail costs a lot of money, but we should have a flyer or an informative piece of literature that goes home with every student from every school, so that, you know, not everybody's on social media, not everybody's watching YouTube videos, you know, we have to put this in the kids' backpacks to make sure they get home. Also, we can encourage our principals to do Parent Links, a Parent Link, which is an automated message that goes out to all their parents. That's how you get to the parents, because not everybody's on social media watching YouTube or going to the movies or whatever. So I would encourage that strategy. And I just want everybody, you know, and the clarification is if you're going 10 miles per hour over is when this would trigger, correct?
Anything over 10.
Anything over 10?
Correct. 11-plus.
It's funny. I've seen people commenting on social media, emails we're getting. I mean, if you're going over 10 miles per hour in a school zone, you got, you know, you need to be, you know, issued a consequence.
That's a greater discretion than what an officer would write at. We could write at one over in a school zone.
Right.
We're giving them 10.
Yes.
That's very gracious.
And I agree with that.
And just so you know, to answer your question with the public service announcement, we put it out to all the schools already. We'll do it again. And we did do it on Parent Links. So all the schools are well-informed. We're just going to have to redo our public service announcement push.
Right. Yeah, piggyback, just a reminder, just to, you know. That's the best way to get it to them, is going straight through the schools. But no, I appreciate, but just like, that's it. Thank you so much.
I think, I may be wrong, but I don't think it's so much the parents as it is our pass-through traffic...
Yes.
...that we have to be concerned about. And I think when we send out our education material or we reach out, safety first. That's what we really need to, that our children's safety comes first. And that's why we're doing this, not for revenue, not for any other reason, but for the safety of our children. And I think that's paramount. And that's where we should be explaining why this is going, why this procedure is being installed.
And we are in agreeance with that.
Yeah. Great. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Mr. Kavanaugh, please call the roll.
Commissioner Rydell.
Yes.
Commissioner Welch.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last item on our agenda tonight, ordinance number 2025-52, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Coconut Creek, Florida, amending the city's code of ordinances by amending Chapter 13 Land Development Code. Article 1 Administration Regulations and Procedures, Division 3 Implementation Procedures by amending Section 13-41 Request for Accommodation in order to update the city's code to comport with recent changes to state law regarding procedures for handling and processing requests for accommodation from the city's land development code, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date. This item is before you at this time for first reading.
Thank you.
Move it.
Be good.
Moved by Commissioner Rydell, seconded by Commissioner Welsh.
And just a general overview, this ordinance was drafted in order to, again, comport with recent changes to state law this last legislative session, specifically Senate Bill 954, which requires that reasonable accommodation procedures be in place and that reasonable, request for reasonable accommodation be responded to within 60 days or they're deemed granted, and that any request for additional information be requested at the 30-day or sooner mark. Our existing code regulations provided for 45 days didn't provide any specifics, or rather provided some inconsistent specifics with regards to the timing for additional information, and didn't take into account the shot clock, so to speak, in that the requests for reasonable accommodation now under the statute are to be date stamped. So this helps to bring our code into compliance with the new requirements, which become effective January 1st.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Thank you. Mr. Kavanaugh, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Rydell.
Yes.
Commissioner Welch.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Now, city manager, would you please give your report?
Thank you, Mayor Commission. A couple of items of interest. I'm sure you all are following with great interest the legislative delegation and all the work associated with property taxes. Staff is also following that very closely through both the Broward County City Managers' Association and through our lobbyists in Tallahassee. And I will be working with Peter Gay, the finance director, on a really clear analysis of what the various alternatives might mean to us and where they go. The picture from the League of Cities is not as bleak as some of the projections, but I, you know, we can only see what we see when it becomes bill language. But for the most part, we'll be working sort of in two phases, you know, influencing what the bill language is. And then, once there is bill language, working on how we as a city address it with our residents and provide the information to our residents. We are submitting three appropriation requests, one for the courtyard remodel, one for the North Area Utilities, and for various facility roof replacements. So wish us luck through that process. That'll be something we'll be following throughout the legislative session. And then, exciting, Saturday is Harvest Fest. If you don't have your parking pass, let me know, and we'll make sure you have one. The Gray Star. There was a question related to the early start permit, I mean, the after-hours construction permit that was issued by staff for the Gray Star. And I just wanted to make sure you understand, the process for a concrete pour of that magnitude is that because of the need to bring in many, many, many trucks in a row and have a continuous pour for those concrete slabs, that type of construction activity needs to happen in the cooler hours of the night and uninterrupted. So we did approve an after-hours construction permit. If you have any questions about that, you know, just give me a call. We are, the contractor has agreed to do whatever they can to minimize the noise. But if you do hear from your residents, give me a call and we'll modify that condition. We have, the contractor has notified residents in the area, so hopefully it's, hopefully it's quiet. It'll only be a couple of nights.
Do we have any idea how far into the night they will go?
Yeah, it'll start about 2:00 AM and probably be 2:00 to 5:30 or 6:00 in the morning.
Okay. Thank you. They can't start early?
I don't know the exact answer to that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sorry. Sorry. That's all. Thank you.
City Attorney, please.
Good evening. I just wanted to let you all know that today we filed our amended complaint in response to the Florida Department of Transportation's motion to dismiss in the term-pike case. I will keep you updated as it evolves. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Rydell?
I'll be very brief. I want to wish our city clerk a belated happy birthday. Big 35th for him. Looking good, spry and lean. Many, many more birthdays. Lean to me?
Yeah.
The Solid Waste Authority has had a robust number of meetings. It's going to culminate on November 21st, which is going to be a reshuffling of the board. There's going to be a revote for the executive committee and the governing board meeting based on quorum. So obviously, I intend to try to still sit on the executive board, but that vote will come up. On that front, there's not any substantive updates that I can give the commission at this time. Harvest Fest, and I'm not going to see you all before Thanksgiving, so have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Welsh?
Yes. I echo birthday wishes to our city clerk and also our chief of police. And I think our deputy city manager's got one upcoming. You can't avoid them, I'm sorry. And at Pioneer Day, our honoree from the city, Sharon Volmer, Linda Whitman came on her birthday to acknowledge, and so I thought that was pretty supportive of a fellow colleague. We had small business recognized today, and I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Rydell. I just wanted to say, I saw in a post from J&amp;J Ship and Print that they, Seminole Casino Googled how to find emergency shipping, because a big job that they had, and J&amp;J came up, and they accommodated their request. So, you know, hats off to them for, so now they've got a good relationship with a very large vendor. Very proud of that. And I wanted to acknowledge Winston Park teacher, Crystal Langley, for educating her second-grade students in local government by pulling up our website and giving the bio from each one of us. And I think each one of us received letters from those students. I have to say, if it were that easy to teach adults about local government, it would be good, because they had some really good, really good questions. And really, that's all I have, except for happy Thanksgiving, happy early Thanksgiving, and stay safe if you're traveling.
Thank you. Commissioner Brody?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to wish Mr. Kavanaugh a belated birthday too. And here's one that nobody realizes, is tomorrow's Chief Hofer's birthday. I know he's not here, but pass it on that we wish him a happy birthday tomorrow. So just real quick, I had the opportunity, and I spoke a little bit on it on Tuesday, of listening to SEAL Team Six Chief Robert O'Neill. And if you guys don't know who that is, if you missed my wonderful speech, he was the SEAL Team leader that led the team for Captain Phillips. He's also the SEAL Team leader that rescued Lone Survivor. He's also the SEAL Team member who shot Osama bin Laden. And if you don't get a chance to see this guy's videos, I recommend it, because the guy has some great philosophies on life. And, you know, when you run 400 missions, you know, you're damaged mentally between the ears. And this guy's got a great attitude about how staying focused and how to lead a team. So I recommend if anybody has the time to go look at those videos and Google them up. Amazing speaker. He speaks to the crowd as a service member. So if you have sensitive ears, you probably want to maybe not watch him, because he does speak from a military standpoint, which is a lot of curse words and a lot of colorful dialogue, but matter-of-factly. So it's kind of refreshing to have somebody who just, you know, speaks what they think. But it's an amazing story of this guy's life. So I was lucky to do that. I think that was a highlight of my Veterans, Veterans Day week, or, you know, the week of, besides having my grandson out at my very, at my speech. So that was kind of cool, that he got to witness me up there blabbering away. So that's all I have for tonight. You know, I'll see everybody after we get back from Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Wasserman?
Thank you, Mayor. Three quick, three quick things. Was able to go out to the Gray Star construction site with our deputy city manager about a week ago. The project manager there is really taking, you know, he's really just doing his best to make it a smooth process for the residents there on the, on the north side of the property. They are very thoughtful in things they're doing. And I was, you know, I was a no vote on the item, but I was, you know, relieved to see that things were going smooth and that, you know, it was coming along. And it seemed to be like everything was under control. So thank you, Scott, and Justin as well, for, you know, keeping tabs on that and making sure, you know, the tree accountability and all that is good and everything is up to par. I really appreciate it. I found it, I think everybody up here got an email about a Holocaust event happening tomorrow morning for the Broward County Public Schools. We got this email yesterday. I'm appalled that we would get an email from them two days before or three days before an event, when we have busy schedules, we have work schedules, we have things that we are doing. You know, tomorrow, I'm actually going to Winston Park to read to Crystal's class. And I am not going to, I'm expected to be there tomorrow, and I can't go to the Holocaust event if I would have known, you know. But to let us know a couple of days before, it's, I guess, not surprising with the district. But it is, it was upsetting that we're just finding this out, because I know it's going to be amazing. And it just gives us food for thought for when our event is in January. We give people proper notification for when we reveal the memorial, and we just give people common decency that, hey, we're doing something, you know, three weeks in advance, you know, please join us, not three days in advance. And yeah, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Happy birthday to our city clerk, Kavanaugh. Thank you for everything you do. Our deputy city manager, Scott, sure you're going to have a blast this weekend, and anyone else's, and Chief Hofer, happy birthday. And anyone else that's celebrating a birthday this month, thank you. I know my grandson turned 18 yesterday, my daughter's, I won't tell you what she's turning. But anyway, her birthday is in a couple of days as well. Before I go into my report, I'd like to remind everyone, all the commissioners and vice mayor, that on November 19th, there is ethics training by our city attorney. Okay? So make sure you're there. Okay?
It's Wednesday.
That's Wednesday, the 19th. Wednesday, the 19th. Right. Yes. I want to congratulate Sharon Volmer on her receiving the award for Pioneer's Day. I also want to thank our city manager, Sheila Rose, for a great event, boots and beats. Wish there was more in attendance, but it's such a big venue that we did have 600 people there, but didn't seem it. But a great event, so I hope everybody's looking forward to it next year. Also, today was, I'm not going to tell you what the last couple of weeks have been, but today was like a super fabulous day. Started my day, well, with meetings, but then came back here at 3:00, and Detective Clint Corey brought F.I.L. here, the residents and the participants, and they toured City Hall. And they were just, they were just so thrilled to be here. They just make you feel good. I walked into the roll call room, and just, they burst into expression, Jackie, Jack. It was just, and then I left there and went to the community center, because Congressman